Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Board of Commissioners, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, regular meeting, City Hall, August 2nd, 2022, 4:30 PM. I'm going to begin with the pledge allegiance, if you would, stand for me.
I'll just do the pledge and then we'll do the prayer, sorry about that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'm going to provide an invocation. Heavenly Father, we just come to you tonight, we put our city, we put our state, we put our people to you as just things that we can't control and just the lives that have been lost and the families that are grieving in eastern Kentucky. We pray right now for our own police officer, the Craig family, Jenna and Benjamin, it's the loss of their daughter and his or grieving, and we just thank you for the family that's and the churches that have come together to their support, and we pray for this family, behold them, and we just pray for our future, and we thank you for your blessings, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, everybody. I do want to make one announcement, and then I'll ask Mr. Mizel to make some comments. I'd like to congratulate our Chamber of Commerce, a lot of things are happening in our community, but there was a event in San Antonio of all cities and states, and seventeen states competed for an award, and this was the Community Economic Development Award that was given to our chamber, and Ron Bunch accepted this on behalf of the work between our county, our city, our university, our economic development that we've seen across with, you know, Governor Beshear and everything coming together. We have over twenty-three hundred jobs that are in the development at this moment, and so many major things are happening, more things are happening in our community, but it is a milestone, and it's something to recognize and behold and to take part in that, so we probably are going to be announcing some celebration of this effort and this notary of this, but I'd like to thank our chamber especially for this. I know he's not here, but I want to recognize this tonight, so thank you. All right, let's have our roll call, please.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Peirgen.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Mayor Alcott.
Here.
Mr. Mizel, do you have any comments at this time?
We'd like to go to a public hearing at this point for property tax rate recommendation from Katie Schaller-Ward, our Assistant City Manager CFO, and then I'll, then I've got a few comments after Katie finishes up.
Katie?
Good afternoon. I am here on an annual basis, it seems like, when we are doing our property tax, we are required to have a public hearing, and so we did have property assessments provided from the Property Valuation Administrator for property values as of January 1st, 2022, so this past January, and we completed computations which are required by statute, and I am here to present our 2022 property tax rates, proposed rates for both real estate and personal property. So the purpose of the public hearing is basically a proposed rate for real property, which is set between the compensating rate, which I'll go over in just a second, and a 4% growth rate requires a public hearing by statute. We did publish notice of the public hearing in the Daily News on two dates, July 22nd and July 26th, which is also required by statute. So basic information here, we're looking at total property growth from 2021 to 2022. The total assessed value of real estate in the city limits for 2022 is over $6.4 billion, which is a 5.1% growth rate over the previous year, which is almost $314 million. Since the city has surpassed the $6 billion mark, we are required by statute to pay the Property Valuation Administrator $100,000 a year for their property assessments. Turn our attention to existing property growth, so this is existing real estate, the assessments grew by 3.7% for 2022, which was just over $223.1 million. New property assessments in 2022 adds another 1.5%, or an additional $90.8 million over the 2021 values. So here is the wonderful computation that we have to do, it's the formula above, and you see some numbers up there. So before we can set our tax rate, all local governments have to go through this, we're required to calculate the compensating tax rate, and basically that rate is what would represent bringing in the same dollar value as we did in 2021 with the real estate values. So it's kind of just a no-growth rate. So if we were to achieve or maintain the same total proposed revenues last year using the 2021 tax assessments excluding the new property, then our compensating rate would be 19.8 cents, basically, that letter I there at the bottom. In 2021, the 20.5 cents could have produced $12.5 million in potential revenue, that's the capital A toward the middle of the page. That actually never happens because we don't ever get 100% collection. We average about 94% collection rate, so we produced, actually collected just over 11.7 million for this last 2021 property tax year, and if you recall, we did actually extend the property tax deadline because of the tornadoes, but that includes total collections for that, for the fiscal year 2022. And the partly why we don't collect 100% is because there are exonerations and different adjustments to tax rates or assessment values, if you will, during the year that we don't know about when those assessments are provided, because they're as of January, and there could be exonerations that could come in in March or April or May, and we don't always get that information ahead of time to know all that information as part of the calculations. And just to note, I think I've been asked this in the past, the exonerations, a homestead exemption is provided to anyone, residents who are 65 years and older, it's $40,500 for tax year 2022, it's the same as 2021. This rate is set by statute for a two-year period, and it's the Kentucky Office of Property Value Administration that determines that amount. So it will change again in 2023, but 2021 and 2022 are the same at $40,500. The budget for fiscal year 22 was actually set at 11.75 million, so we did not collect enough to cover the budget. Now, the other part of this calculation is looking at a 4% possible growth rate. So this calculation is considering the 4% rate, the 4% growth rate is the maximum allowable increase by statute, which is not subject to recall. So any local government can take this 4% and we can go forward with it, and we don't have to worry about a petition or have it be on a ballot or anything like that. If we go above 4%, then there are some additional restrictions and requirements. A rate of 20.6 cents would be at the 4% rate, that is the third number up there, that letter, number three, and that could produce $13.2 million in potential revenues, but again, without knowing homestead exemptions or other exonerations applied during the calendar year, and considering we only generally collect about 94%, the revenues produced would probably be closer to $12.38 million. And that, if we were to go with the 20%, I'm sorry, with the 4% increase at the 20.6 cents, that could produce an additional $60,000 more in revenue versus keeping the same rate that we currently have today at the 20.5 cents. So the current rate, 20.5 cents, could produce $12.5 million in potential revenues, however, again, considering a 94% collection rate, it's likely to be closer to 11.75 million, which does fall below our FY23 budget amount of 12.25 million. The FY23 budget figure is a 4.3% increase over FY22 budgeted amount and a 4.5% increase over the actual FY22 collections. As the city continues to see increases in every aspect of operating and capital costs, just the beginning of this fiscal year, the recommendation is for the city to recapture its real estate property tax rate of the 20.6 cents, which represents the 4% growth rate, but is the same rate that the city held from 2008 to 2017. So we're looking to recapture the 2017 tax rate. The 4.5% growth on existing real estate in 2018 is what precipitated the decrease in the rate to 20.5 cents, which has been in place for the last four years. If we could recapture the 2017 tax rate of 20.6 cents, then we could potentially gain the additional $60,000 in revenue for our budget. The impact to the property owner is an additional $1 for every $100,000 of assessed value. So if a property is assessed at $250,000, then it's going to be $2.50 increase. So $100,000 assessment at 20.6 cents is $206. Previously, if we, if we keep the 20.5 cents, it's $205. So it's a $1 increase to the property owner. And as we've seen, existing property growth, existing real estate is growing substantially, and based on all of the tornado activity and the positive aspects of that activity, is a lot of reconstruction, repairs, renovations to a lot of our existing real estate, which is likely to grow in the next year. So just keep that in mind as we go through the rest of this presentation, if you would. This is a 10-year history of the real estate property growth and tax rates, except for where each of the previous years. As previously mentioned, the tax rate remained unchanged from 2008 through 2017 until the slightly lowered in 2018. By taking the allowable 4% growth rate, this would only be the 10th increase in real property taxes going back 32 years, and it would be the first in the last 20 years. We have not increased property tax rates since 2003. Again, this is a $1 increase for every $100,000 of assessed value and could potentially add $60,000 to our operating budget. This is a chart that compares both of our 20, our proposed 2022 tax rates for real property and personal property compared to the average rates in 2021 for cities, counties, and school districts across the state of Kentucky. The city's personal property tax rate has remained unchanged since 1980, and it was lowered from 30 cents at that point. So at 26 cents, it has stayed for many years. The city's FY23 annual operating budget totals, total taxes represents 15.3% of all revenue and 23.1% of the general fund revenue, which is just under $20 million. And of that $20 million, real estate represents 61.5%. Again, another comparison, and this is local, looking at our Warren County, Warren County School District, the Bowling Green Independent School District, and then the Commonwealth of Kentucky, real property tax rates and personal property tax rates, and you can see our rate essentially falls below the local entities with the exclusion of the state. And again, these are their 2021 tax rates because the 2022s are not yet available. So some general information, persons that own property in the City of Bowling Green will pay both to the City of Bowling Green and to Warren County, property taxes. Those who live within the Bowling Green Independent School District would also pay Bowling Green Independent School District taxes, which are collected by the city. We do not set that rate, we have no control over that rate, we just simply collect it on their behalf. City taxes are due December 31st, 2022, this date falls on a Saturday this year, and city offices will be closed on Monday, January 2nd, in observance of the New Year's holiday. Payments are obviously due December 31st, and if not paid on time, there is a 10% penalty, which would be applied to invoices not paid or postmarked by December 31st. We do have an overnight drop box outside of City Hall Annex, they can submit payments by mail, or they could pay online, we have that option available as well. With the city offices closed, however, on January 2nd, there's an automatic three-day grace period built into the schedule this year, so we would not technically apply that penalty until we are in the office on January 3rd, but it would be the first thing we do that morning. So, again, drop box, pay online, lots of different options there. Tax invoices are similar in format as in past years, so they're an eight-and-a-half-by-11 regular-sized piece of paper with a tear sheet at the bottom. We estimate mailing out approximately 23,000 invoices, we will probably get back about 1,000 of those because of incorrect addresses, and so we make every attempt to get the correct address and remail those taxes out, or those invoices out, but we are not always 100% successful. We do encourage people who have changed their addresses since January 1st to contact our Treasury Office and verify that we have the correct address on file for them, and then for them to also make that permanent change with the Property Valuation Administrator. We expect to mail out, if all goes according to plan, property tax invoices in early October, and then even if a tax invoice is not received, the property owner is still required to pay the amount owed by the deadline. So we do encourage property owners to confirm with their mortgage companies, persons with mortgage escrow accounts set to pay their taxes will receive a city invoice, as does the property owner, but you always want to confirm that your mortgage company has made payment on time. The property owner is still responsible, and property owners are not excused of their responsibility for paying taxes or any of the penalties and interest. And by statute, once the penalties are added, we cannot take them off. And then if, again, a property owner has not received their invoice by the 1st of November, to please contact our office, and we can verify that we have the correct address, and we can send out a duplicate invoice. I would like to thank our city's Treasury staff for all of their efforts with processing the 23,000-plus invoices that go out every year. They assist the property owners with questions and payments, and they are a top-notch group of individuals, and I'm very pleased that we have them as our staff. This is a public hearing, so we can take comments at this time from the public, anyone can come forward who is here in the audience, and certainly the board, if you have any questions, those can also occur.
Katie, and we may have some comments, but can you just give us a little clarification from the 2017 to 2018, when we went down to the, from the .206 to the .205, what was the main rationale behind that?
Because we exceeded 4.5% in our existing real estate growth, when you exceed 4%, then typically your rate decreases, and that 20.5 cents was the 4% growth rate max that we could do without any restrictions. So had we kept the 20.6 cents, then there would have been some additional things that we would have had to do before we could move forward with that rate.
Thank you. It's open for public comments at this time. Commissioners? Thank you very much, Katie.
You're welcome. Questions, comments can also be sent via address, email, and fax, that's provided there on the screen, we'll take those up till August 9th, so if anyone wants to submit any communication, they have that opportunity. If there are no objections, I'd like to present an ordinance with the 2022 property tax rates as proposed at the August 16th Board of Commissioners meeting. Are there any objections?
Doesn't need a motion, there are no objections.
Oh, just a consensus to bring forward the ordinance.
I appreciate your presentation, and on one hand, I do understand why we need to do it, but also am struggling. $60,000 is a lot of money to me personally, but when I look at the overall city budget, that's not a lot of money, but it is concerning to me that we're going to raise this when everything across our country is going up, and it's just hard for me to want to do that to our citizens, even though it is a small amount.
I understand.
So a $500,000 home would be a $5 increase? I have no objection.
Mayor, if I may.
Absolutely.
So what we want to avoid happening, though, as Katie mentioned, in years where we go above the 4% in existing property growth, that basically mandates a rate reduction, so it's like, it's like the buoy that goes up and down, that you have, you have to go both ways, or if you only go one way, and that way is down, we're ever increasing our dependability on our occupational tax and never adjusting, by never adjusting our property tax, so, like, all due respect, Commissioner, I see what you're saying, too, I don't like tax increases either, we've, we've done very well not, being able to avoid tax rate increases over many, many years, but we're looking at this as, you know, we may start hitting some years where we're above that 4%, we would, we'd have to take the rate down, which puts us even further behind later on, so just keep that in mind, that's how, how that works with that existing property assessment.
And I certainly don't make this recommendation lightly. I, I am looking at the budget, and I'm contemplating everything that we budgeted for this fiscal year, everything is coming in more than what we anticipated. And as you mentioned, it's being seen across the board with individuals in every aspect, and therefore, local government has that same problem with our costs, and we haven't raised rates in 20 years, and this is a very small incremental adjustment, and I feel, I feel more comfortable presenting such a small incremental adjustment than coming to you next year and saying, "I need a $9 increase." I don't ever want to do that, I want to try and do incremental changes when we need to, and then if, if we do have to look at our rate being higher in growth, exceeding that 4%, and we do have to contemplate next year what we do with our property tax rate, then, again, trying to anticipate the needs of our community, but also the needs of our local government to be able to continue to provide our services without impact to the community.
Any other commissioners at this moment? We have a consensus to move forward?
I'm definitely going to have, I'm going to, you know, look at it a little bit more, I'm going to have some more questions, I would like some forecasting of the two, you know, if we kept it, if we did the, the small increase, what, what does it look like in terms of revenue projections? Because, you know, this is a difficult decision, and I don't take it lightly, so I definitely need to think about it, sleep on it, and just get maybe a little bit more information before I would be comfortable saying whether I would be a yes or a no vote at this time.
Katie, I have to be the same way, the one thing that I wrote down is that I was looking at is, for, I understand it's like a dollar, but then I looked at it, and kind of like what Commissioner Hill had said, it's about $60,000 that we're looking at. Is there anything that's in our budget now that possibly we can go back and reexamine and reduce, you know, and that may be something later that can be asked of?
Yeah, there's certainly that possibility, we have several capital projects, but most of that is not in operating costs, that's, that's set aside, money we've pre-saved for a lot of those projects, so when we're talking about utilities, we're talking about basic professional services, basic contractual costs that we have, all of those expenses are going up, and they're not necessarily expenses that we have the control over, you know, with utility rates, you know, electric, gas, water and sewer, all those rates are going up, we also have just normal maintenance expenses, we approved the contract bid the other day, we budgeted half of what we would need for that particular bid to get us through the next year. I'm trying to hedge some of that with what we're doing with the close of FY22, but I can't control all of those additional increases that we potentially will see.
And right now, I guess, listening to the public, definitely listening to you, because I'm, you're an expert in this, I don't know I can be a yes right now, but I'm not a no yet.
I will certainly provide the additional information. I presented that here in the publication, but obviously, it was not up there on the screen for you to see, so I will provide that in a written email to you all, so you can have that additional information in terms of the revenue and the impacts. Okay?
Thank you, Katie.
You're welcome. If there's no other discussion, then this public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Next item is the regular meeting, July 19, 2022, approval of minutes. Any questions at this time? I'm sorry, Jeff.
Just a couple, a couple of quick things. Want to remind everyone in the audience, if you want to make public comments at the end of the meeting, you need to sign the clipboard in the back of the room, back corner of the room, to speak after the regular agenda. And then, also, I need to withdraw item number seven out of your agendas. Ordinance number BG 2022-41. We need to do a little bit more work on that one before we bring it back to you. So, I'd like to withdraw that tonight, hopefully bring that back to you on the 16th. Item number seven.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, approval of minutes, regular meeting, July 19, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. Any questions or comments at this time? None, roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal order number 2022-159.
Unit's order approving the promotions of Nicole Hatchet and Melissa Wartak to the position of Police Sergeant in the Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Dingler Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
So, before I call Chief Delaney up, I'd like to recognize the retirement of Sergeant Tyler Chamings, and thank him for his years of service to the BGPD. With this, his retirement, that creates an open position for sergeant. You all also approved a sergeant position in the budget, in FY23 budget, that we were also filling tonight, and so I'd like to ask Chief to come up and make his recommendations for promotions.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, and Mr. Mizel. Also, I'd like to thank Sergeant Tyler Chamings for his twenty years of service. He makes me feel a little old, though. He was one of my first recruits that I trained, and now he's retired, so I don't know what that says about me, but he did a great job. He served the city well for twenty years, and his, his service doesn't go without recognition. So, I appreciate everything that he's devoted, not only to our department, but to the city over the last twenty years. So, thank you. With that, I had a good problem and a bad problem at the same time. Got five people on a top-five list who are eligible for promotion, who are all deserving, but there can only be two tonight, and those two deserve to be here tonight. They've worked hard for it. So, I'd like to present the first one to you, Melissa Wartak, if she would please stand. Melissa came to us in 2012, January 16th, from Indiana. She's worked her way through the ranks at the Police Department. She's been on the Criminal Investigations Division for the last, since 2016. She was an Advanced Crime Scene Processor. She's been to Homicide Investigation School, Criminalistics Academy, SPI Homicide, all those things while she was in the Criminal Investigations Division. She's also a graduate of Ball State University with a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice and Criminology, 2007, and then she graduated, and I'm going to mess this up, I'm just going to tell you, Valspario University School of Law with her Juris Doctor in 2011. Her parents, Lori and John, are here tonight to help support her with this. So, the first one I'd like to recommend is future Sergeant Melissa Wartak.
Melissa, you have family with you tonight? Stand up, Mom, Dad. All right. Wow. Fantastic, glad you're here tonight.
Nicole Hatchet, do you please stand?
The second one is Nicole Hatchet. She also started January 16th, 2012. So, they, they started together. Nicole is from Bowling Green. Her parents are here with her tonight to help celebrate. Nicole has been on several special assignments since 2012. She's a Bowling Green Law Enforcement Instructor, Academy Instructor, Defensive Tactics Instructor, Firearms Instructor. She's on our Critical Response Team, Drone Operator, Police Training Officer. She was a Explorer Advisor, and she's a previous motor officer. She's been on a lot of several specialized units, a lot of talent, and both, might I add, have been in an acting sergeant's position. Nicole is still in one, and Melissa just finished an acting sergeant's position, and they did a great job. So, with those recommendations, I'd like to recommend Nicole Hatchet and Melissa Wartak tonight for promotion. Any questions?
Can you introduce your family as well?
Parents are here, my friend, brother, and my girlfriend, also Nicole.
Thank you all for being here to support Nicole tonight. All right, I think we're going to make a little vote up here, see what we can do. Thank you, Chief. Okay, any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
We have any other sergeants out there, please stand up. So, it's good to see the sergeant family here tonight, and the, and the family of blue from Bowling Green Police Department. We thank you all for being here to support our newest sergeant, so thank you. All right, moving on, municipal order number 2022-160.
Unit's order approving a contract through cooperative purchase with Atlantic Emergency Solutions, Inc. of Manassas, Virginia, through the cooperative purchasing contract with Houston-Galveston Area Council for the purchase of a fire engine in an amount not to exceed nine-hundred-sixty-eight thousand eighty dollars, and further expressing the intent of the City of Bowling Green to finance costs associated with the purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
In the FY23 budget, you all approved us to proceed with the Station 8 build for Fire Department up in the trans park. With that station, we're going to need a truck, and we come to you tonight with this proposal from Houston-Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. We joined that not too long ago. We really like Pierce Fire Trucks, and they are a licensed dealer of Pierce, and it's on their pricing contract at a price that is a very good price. And so, we come to you tonight asking for approval. This is a, this is a pumper truck, but we need to add a lot of things to this pumper because it's going to be up in the trans park, kind of isolated by itself, and needs to be equipped to fight a lot of different fires up in the trans park. So, in your memo written by Chief Brooks is all the details that we're going to put, the things we're going to put on this truck. It's going to have ninety gallons capacity of foam, two thousand gallons per minute on a pump capacity, and a thousand gallons of water capacity on it, which is more than usual on a pumper, and it's going to be just a little bit bigger truck. So, Chief Brooks is here tonight. He's worked on this. We are going to likely finance this. We'll be bringing that to you later, and, but we'd like to get this ordered because there is a lengthy period of time for this thing to get built and put together, and we're trying to get it timed out in time for it to be ready by the time the station would be ready for, for service and ready for action. So, Chief Brooks is here, can answer any questions you might, or add anything. Chief, do you have more to add?
Yeah, just to give you an update on Station 8, we got our friends that are Carroll, basically their, their plan for the ribbon cutting, and we hope that that is in February of 2024. Probably not likely, but this, this pumper that I hopefully you approve, it is, it is a different animal. We try to standardize our engines, and we were, we were successful in doing that from 2019 to today, but this one's going to be a little different. It'll look the same with regards to the color scheme, and it'll have Bowling Green on it, but it'll be a little different. With that being said, it's about a twenty-four-month lead time. You can see that puts us getting into August, September of 2024. So, we may not have it when the station opens, and we'll have to adjust as necessary with the reserve apparatus, but I do look forward to your approval tonight, so we can get this, this ball rolling, we get this thing built.
That's a long turnaround time, Chief. Thank you for having the Ford Vision get us there, so.
That price is locked in for the twenty-four-month turnaround time?
Yes, ma'am, it is. That same engine, just a few months ago, maybe just a year ago, wouldn't have been that price. It's just, it's tough, and turnaround has went from twelve months to twenty-four in the last sixteen, eighteen months.
I always tell citizens that I talk to, if, if, you know, I hear a fire engine roaring down the street, I'm like, that's a million-dollar piece of equipment right there, you know? That, that requires and deserves a whole lot of respect. And, yeah, they're beautiful, but, but they are expensive.
Just one follow-up question. Since this is first, the new station out by the trans park, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, does it have special equipment on it that is part of why it takes so long for more of an industrial type of incidents that you all might be responding to? Or is this the right truck for this, you know, making sure we can be prepared as possible? Or is that something we'll need to add on after we get established?
Sure, with the infrastructure that has been approved and is on the way, that definitely made a factor in this, but we designed this truck to serve that entire area. Specific on equipment is mainly to do with the suppression efforts, to try to control anything that was to take off, but we're going to rely heavily on, on those infrastructure fire protection systems to at least keep it in check until we can get there. And the good thing is, is that station is located right in the middle of all of that. So, our response times should be, should be at the top of the game.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions, comments at this time? None, roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal order number 2022-161.
Unit's order approving contracts through cooperative purchase and non-competitive negotiations with Best One Fleet Service of Bowling Green, Kentucky, and Ziegler Tire and Supply Company of Massillon, Ohio, under Kentucky State Pricing Contracts for the purchase of tires for the Public Works Fleet Division in a total amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
Our Fleet Division does an incredible job of taking care of all of our vehicles and equipment citywide. Just, I can't, can't say enough about what they do and what they get done. So, we need tires pretty much every day, all the time, and we can't keep a big stock warehouse of tires, because we use so many different sizes and types. So, we have opportunity on the state contract where we can go out and select tires that have already been bid and are at the lowest price, and there's three vendors on there, Best One Fleet, BG Muffler, and Ziegler Tire. We would like to select, continue on with the master agreement from the state pricing contract, and that's what's before you tonight, to allow Fleet to continue to buy from the state pricing contract these tires when we need them. We don't have time to go out and, and get quotes. Every time we need a set of tires, we need to pick up the phone or get on the, get on the computer and order them up and have them delivered pronto by, within a day or so. So, that's what this is before you tonight. Greg is here, can answer any questions on this, if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions, comments? None, roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal order number 2022-162.
Unit's order approving a contract through cooperative purchase with Iron Armor LLC of Mogadore, Ohio, under Kentucky State Pricing Contract for the purchase of WaveTronic Radar Detection Equipment for the Public Works Department in an amount not to exceed seventy-five-thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
So, again, in the 23 budget, we, we allocated some money to do some improvements at the intersections of Ashley Circle, both Ashleys on Scutful Road, as well as the intersection of Chestnut and Tenth Avenue. And what we want to do there is the loops in, that's in the pavement that you try to get on with your tires to make the light turn green. We, we want to use this new equipment that we have also have in the budget. It's more of a radar detection. It's called WaveTronic Smart Sensor Matrix, detects cars, even detects bicycles that approach intersections where, you know, you got a bike, and you're trying to get on that line and get the light to turn green. This will be more like a motion sensor. Greg has looked at this, and we found this also in the Kentucky State Pricing Contract, and would like to move forward with it for not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars with this Armor LLC, to start using this technology, and we'll hopefully start using this more and more. This, what this also does is whenever we repave or we do overlay, we won't have to worry about going back in and setting those, those little loops and cables in the, in the pavement. We'll have a motion camera up above at that intersection that will pick up traffic, and we won't have to worry about redoing the, the sensors in the pavement anymore, once we get these rolled out. And we have numerous intersections that we maintain that are city roads in the city, so this will be a very valuable piece of equipment going forward, but this is our first, first test with it, and we'd like to move on with it, with your permission. Greg is here, can answer any more questions on this.
Greg, does this have any recording capability, or is it just sensor-only?
It does not record. It can, when it's set up with the right equipment in the controller cabinet, it can count based upon that, like Jeff was saying, it's like a, a motion sensor, home security cameras, you know, it can tell it to record and tell it to count.
So, it has the capability, but it, this price doesn't include that?
It does. This includes all the components that go together to make up that ability, but your controller, we're in the process, as we go along, not only this technology, but the cabinet itself, there are, there are newer controllers that the State Highway Department is starting to use, and we are as well, that gives us extra and additional capabilities so we can do things like that. So, this in and of itself doesn't, but it's a component of what does. I guess is the simplest term.
Thank you.
How many intersections is this going to cover? Is this one intersection for this price?
This is three intersections as it's proposed. There are other intersections that we can take and buy smaller pieces, smaller, we don't have to buy the whole gamut of equipment that goes in the controller to still make a difference. Like, for instance, the signals that we're redoing and adding a lane at Ashley Circle, the State Highway Department controls and operates those signals. Because we're expanding the roadway, it's incumbent upon us to, to make the equipment, to provide the equipment that goes into that cabinet that the state maintains in order to keep the signal operating each intersection, each leg of the intersection with the same technology to make it function properly. So, it, it's more than one intersection, it's three, and then hopefully plus, if we can do some smaller applications, too.
Have you identified those intersections? Could you share with the general public?
We, we have not, because a lot of that goes into the fact that some fail. We have some, some cabinets that fail, they get hit by lightning, you know, it goes on and on, and so we, we keep these, it's kind of a maintenance thing, too. And again, the seventy-five thousand dollars is just an all-encompassing amount that we can use throughout the year, so we haven't identified any more than those three for total replacement this year.
I had a couple of follow-up questions. So, excited to see that, you know, of course, it's going to save taxpayer dollars, as Jeff Mizel had shared with us about how it's going to, as we improve those intersections, that it'll, we won't have to tear them up each time, but also said it was going to increase safety, and so I might have missed that. How does it increase safety? does it increase safety at an intersection as well?
Well, safety, anytime, if you get a, a loop in the pavement that doesn't work and the signal's red and it doesn't change as it should, you get some drivers that, well, I'm tired of sitting here, I'm just going to go. So that helps that. That's just a small safety component. But when the signal's working properly, the driver expectations are met better and it just goes into a safer roadway.
That goes on my second question in terms, because this is our first ones here. So in terms of what we know of other municipalities who may have already used this, does this improve response time? Because, you know, definitely have experienced that trying to, did I get on the, do I need to back up and try it again?
Right.
So does it make it quicker?
They're not subject to the, the failure in the pavement. When the, when you get rutting at intersections, the loops can break. And so therefore it, it doesn't have that failure rate. It's a whole lot more reliable, even in, in weather and rain and snow, it tends to work better. The, the, again, the State Highway Department's been using it a long time. They first put those in at the new interchange on Scottsville Road over I-65 because the interchange, the interchange was so large, plus it was a concrete deck and they couldn't really saw the loops into the concrete. So we, they've been used in this community for a long time and they've been successful there. So.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Meredith. Other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-163.
Municipal Order Approving A Cost of Living Adjustment And An Increase In Annual Lease Payment Related To The Lease Agreement Between The City Of Bowling Green And The Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Hill, second back Commissioner Perigin, Mr. Mizel.
Some people may not know this, but we actually leased 53 acres from the airport for Crosswinds Golf Course. It's mainly the holes that are, of course, closest to the airport, the runways. But anyway, we have 20-year lease agreements and we re-up on the lease amount every five years. And we need to re-up on this new five years. And the amount is going from 63, 27, 88 to 64, 72, 16. This is based on a CIP increase adjustment that was agreed upon in, in many, many, many years ago. So just a slight increase to $6,472 annually for the next five years for those 53 acres of golf course from the airport. Hillary worked on this with the airport. Can help answer any questions you might have.
Questions, comments? None. Roll call.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2022-40, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate. Ordinance Rezoning Tracks Of Land Containing 20 Acres From AG Agriculture To LI Light Industrial Located At Zero Southwest Parkway And A Portion Of 5865 Russerville Road Presently Owned By Weston Apartments LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Move back Commissioner Hill, second back Commissioner Perigin, Mr. Mizel.
This one was taken up by the Planning and Zoning Commissioners and it was a 6-0. It was seven of the eight members present, one abstention and, but passed 6 to 0, 20 acres from Ag to Light Industrial out on Southwest Parkway and Russell Road. Ben Peterson is here, can answer any questions you might have on this one.
Questions, comments? None. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2022-37, second reading is binding.
Ordinance Amending Code Of Ordinances. Ordinance Amending Chapter 15 Business and General Regulations Of The City Of Bowling Green Code Of Ordinances Related To Towing Fee Limits In Private Parking Lots.
So moved.
Second.
Move back Commissioner Hill, second back Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
I believe this is a second reading.
Sorry. Absolutely right. I apologize. This was a 5-0 from our commissioners at the last meeting. Any questions, comments at this time? None. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2022-38, second reading is binding.
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate. Ordinance Rezoning Two Tracks Of Land Containing 0.8204 acre From CB Central Business To RM3 Townhouse Multifamily Residential Located At Zero East 12th Avenue Presently Owned By Baron River Capital LLC.
So moved. Second.
Back Commissioner Bailey, second back Commissioner Jaylen Beasley Brown. This is a 5-0 from our last commission meeting, unless there's any questions or comments. None. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2022-39, second reading is binding.
Ordinance Amending Regulation For Use Of Fireworks. Ordinance Temporarily Amending Regulation For The Use Of Fireworks Pursuant To The City Of Bowling Green Code Of Ordinances, Chapter 15 Business and General Regulations, Subchapter 15-6 Storage, Sale, And Use Of Fireworks.
So moved.
Second.
Move back Commissioner Perigin, second back Commissioner Beasley Brown. This was a second reading, was 5-0, our last one. Any questions or comments at this time? None. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. I think we have some guests here tonight. Presentation and Workforce Participation Project Update, John Sal. Would like to join us.
Mayor, if I may, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to introduce John Swords. He's with the South Central Kentucky Workforce Development Board, working on our, our labor participation. We have been meeting, what, monthly, John, if not more often, a group of us, myself, WKU, Sky, CTC, and others, along with John's staff, working to find solutions for workforce participation. After John presents, we have also with us Jason Heflin from Crowd South. Jason has been working with Siding County on the Workforce Participation Campaign, social media and website marketing that we've been working on to draw more people to Bowling Green, Warren County to fill these vacant jobs that we have. As you remember, Siding County joined forces and we are funding a joint project contract with, with Jason at Crowd South. He's going to update you on all the work they've been doing and some successes we've had with the participation campaign. So John, take it away and Jason will, will finish up.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. It's a pleasure to join everybody today. So let me, let me just kind of set this up. This is kind of a friendly reminder slide for, for those that aren't familiar with the public workforce. So we are the South Central Workforce Development Board. We cover the same 10 counties region as Brad. And, you know, we're, we're charged by federal law to serve employers and job seekers. Our, our funding primarily comes from the Department of Labor, you know, it comes from federal appropriations down through the state. And then we get a piece, as one of 10 workforce boards in the state covering a 10-county region, we get a, we get a, a portion of that money each year to serve job seekers and employers. We really act, as a workforce board, we really act as a, as a kind of a, a workforce system convenor and integrator. We study the labor market. We develop niche programs. We convene partners and we develop collaborative solutions. So as Jeff mentioned, we've been meeting since early December. We meet every once every three weeks and it's a workforce participation working group. Hopefully soon we'll turn into a task force with a dedicated position. That's what we're working towards right now. But we're really trying to get our arms around like why, you know, how do we improve our workforce participation rates? We have a, this is a national problem. It's an international problem, but it's, it's not unique to our region. But, you know, we have thousands of job openings, but we have thousands and thousands, tens of thousands of people in, just in our 10-county area that are opting not to work. They are not opting into the workforce, even though they're working force age and able-bodied. And so we're really trying to come up with ideas and solutions. And how do we attack this internally to our region? But also there's a component of recruiting talent from outside the region to come in. And that's really where Crowd South and Jason come in with their campaign. So that's a little overview on, on, on the workforce board and what we're doing. What I wanted to come talk to you about today is, is what, is what the city commission has helped fund. So as you, as you may recall, the city and the county came together to fund a specific position at Fort Campbell, Kentucky. And I'll just tell you a little bit about what we're doing down there, what we've been doing down there the last 12 to 13 weeks, and provide a little bit of numbers for you. So again, you've, you've graciously, the city has offered up 36,000 towards this position. Warren County Fiscal Court has offered up another 36,000. So that's what we have, you know, which I, you know, we have a total of 72,000, which I think, you know, we'll easily get a year, if not a little bit longer out of that, out of that funding. So we were able to hire, you know, advertise and we hired a gentleman, Mike Daley. He's an Army veteran. And he was actually hired and started with us at the workforce board on April 25th. He spent, his first week on the job, he spent here in Bowling Green. He spent meeting with, you know, Judge Buchanan, Jeff Mizel, seeing our community, getting to, to know what we have to offer. And then his actual first day on the job at the Transition Center was on May 3rd, so 12 weeks ago. You see a picture on the top right, that's the Transition Center. Every soldier, every soldier getting out of the military has to go through that building, spend a week in that building. And they're getting classes on how, you know, how to write a resume, how to look for a job, how to transition, successfully transition out of the military, back into civilian society. And so that's our opportunity. Mike, or Mike has an office in that building. That's an in-kind contribution from, from Fort Campbell. And so he's down there Monday through Friday full-time in that building, in the hallways, in the classrooms, talking to soldiers. Right now, he's, he's really engaging about 88 soldiers per week. That's what he's been averaging over the last 12 weeks. And I'll get into a little bit more on that in a minute. If you look on the bottom left, you know, in addition to Mike, we've got a 43-inch flat-screen TV. And then just under his arm there, there's a kiosk. So we've got some other infrastructure there to help, you know, promote the community and to promote the jobs that we've got. And that kiosk serves as a, as an intake form. It's a digital intake form that kind of formally captures somebody so that we can keep track of them. So right now, if you look, I mean, if you look on, there's a, there's an advertisement for the Bowling Green Police Department. We're running advertising for them. We're running Crowd South's video that they produced not too long ago promoting this community. We're promoting a BG Police Department recruiting video. The Bowling Green Convention or Visitor Bureau has produced some good videos and has some good advertising. We're, we're promoting that. We're trying to create opportunity. We want, we want those soldiers not only know about working, living, playing here, but also what are some of the upcoming recreational opportunities? So if they have a weekend free and there's something that the Visitor and Convention Bureau has going on, we're getting that promoted and getting that front of their eyes. So we're, we're trying to use both the TV and mic to really promote what we have going on here. Let me get into some of the numbers. So again, he's really been on, on the scene 12 weeks. And, you know, right now he's seeing about 88 soldiers per week. And the way that, and when I say that, what's happening is, is he gets in, he gets two to three days a week, usually Wednesdays and Thursdays, he goes into, he goes into two to three different classrooms. Each classroom has 25 to 30 soldiers in it roughly. And he gets about three minutes to say, hey, I'm Mike Daley. I'm here to represent South Central Kentucky, Bowling Green, Warren County. We get great jobs, we get great quality of life, yada, yada, yada. Come see me. I want to talk to you. I want to tell you more about it and engage with you. So over, you know, so overall, he's, he's, he's talked to over 1,000 people that way. Three-minute elevator pitch. Approximately 180 of those folks have walked out of that classroom and come and, and come and seen them. So he's seen about 15 or so, plus or minus each week he come. And then he gets into a more in-depth conversation with them. Some people are, okay, they're, once they learn a little bit more, they go and they complete the intake form and others do not. So we've only had, I mean, and this is where I'm a little low, lower than I want to be. We've only had 26 soldiers complete our intake form, which is a, you know, again, on that kiosk, they can also do it off their phone, but that collects a lot more information on them. But it really allows us to kind of know who they are, how to contact them, what their timeline is. This is an important piece of this conversation. The, the soldiers going through that building are not getting out tomorrow. They're not getting out next week generally. They are usually 120 or more days away from getting out. And so really what Mike's got to do is make that initial contact because they're going to be in there for a week. And he's not going to see them again unless they complete that contact form and we can kind of stay engaged with them and keep, keep that conversation alive with them. And so that's, that's part of the challenge of this, is he's got to very quickly meet you, convince you, and then, and then capture enough information on you so that he can stay in touch with you and keep you connected. And so if you think about, he's only been down there 90 days. Most folks are still over four months away from getting out. Our, our numbers are a little bit low at this point in terms of, of what we've worked, just because they're, they're now kind of coming, a lot of them are kind of coming into that window where we can do something with them. We have had 26 soldiers complete the intake form. We've had 11 individuals that, once they complete it, we've had 11 individuals that we've actually referred to employers. 72 employers have received referrals or resumes on those 11 folks. And we've had 12 employers, you know, kind of signaled back to us, and they don't always do that, but signaled back to us that they intended to follow up with, with the folks that have been referred to them. This is always a little bit messy. I mean, I, I learned this morning, we had an employer that got a referral, didn't act on it for two, two weeks, and, and the soldier got hired by somebody else because we didn't move quick enough. So those, those things happen. I won't really, the top right kind of speaks for itself. Mike's been involved in some summer job fairs, some tours, tour that we had over here on June 17th. What I'll tell you, look, look bottom left, things that are in the works. So we, Mike did, you know, we've had a couple of meetings with Lieutenant Colonel Bowles and Mike has found a really qualified individual for her. He's a military police officer that's getting out in the next, in the next four to six weeks. And that service member was actually supposed to be here today for an interview with the Bowling Green Police Department, but because of the funeral, because of the, the service this morning, that's been postponed to next Monday. So she, she's got somebody that's going to come in next Monday and hopefully, hopefully that interview goes well. We've had, we've had a gentleman that we brought over to, for a meeting with Ronnie Pearson, Warren County Emergency Management for an internship. Interview went really well, but the soldier kind of, after the interview, the soldier said, you know, this is what I thought I wanted to do, but it's not quite what I want to do. So we're, we've had to back up and we're re-recruiting for that, that internship position. On that same note, part of the conversation with Lieutenant Colonel Bowles is, it's not just to find somebody for her, but we're really looking at, we're looking at the opportunity to develop an internship program with the Bowling Green Police Department that would allow somebody like any soldier that signed up for the internship under, under a program they have at Fort Campbell to come over here for eight weeks. Right along OJT wouldn't cost the city anything because they're still in the military, still on the Department of Defense payroll. They would just get to intern for eight weeks. And it creates a great learning opportunity and a try-before-you-buy for the Bowling Green Police Department. But potentially beyond Bowling Green Police Department, it could, this is, if we can figure this out, this could create internship opportunities for a variety of city, county government positions and positions in manufacturing, construction, and more. So we're, this is something we're working on right now and I think might become, you know, we'll continue to try to recruit, just straight recruit on behalf of companies. But if we can also create internship pipelines into our community, that really buttresses the recruiting effort. Because now you're just, somebody, if somebody has to spend eight weeks here, they're going to come here because it's a great community. So, so we're working towards that end. I'll finish with a few observations. You know, it's, we're off, I mean, in my opinion, we're off to a little bit slower start than I wanted, but you know, this is, you have to be methodical about this. You have to realize that the military is very much a word-of-mouth community and you have to build trust. And, and we had, we, in addition to that, you have to kind of work out your system and your, and this kinks in your system to make sure that we're capturing people's information, we're staying in touch, we're recruiting them, we're developing that personal relationship. And, and then, and then we can woo them over here and get them handed off to our companies. There's another, another component of this is getting companies, getting our companies to jump on board, know that we're out, know that we have somebody there, and then be responsive. You got to be responsive because there's a lot of competition for these folks, as you can imagine. We've got to be responsive. When we bring somebody to you, you got to move on it. You got to act. You can't, you can't wait two weeks. You're going to, you'll lose them. Because there's too many, there's too many other companies that are, that are turning quicker than we are. So anyway, we're working through some of that, but I do think we're going to pick up, I think a lot of this will pick up. The longer he's there, the more the- So anyway, we're working through some of that, but I do think we're going to pick up, I think a lot of this will pick up. The longer he's there, the more that it's going to pick up. And, and if we can get, if we can overlay an internship program on top of this, then I think we'll really see some, we'll see some solid results out of it. I think of straight recruiting as kind of a quantity, a quantity thing, but I think the internships are a quality. There's a quality aspect to the internships, because we can get the qual, it gives you, it gives, gives us a chance to get the quality that we want for, for any of the, for any of the employers that participate in it. So that's kind of my update on what, where we are with Mike, and how that's going the first, the first 12 weeks of this pilot program. And I am open to any questions, comments, or concerns you may have.
John, these contact cards, are they able to give them to the HR directors at each of the participants within our community, kind of like a hot link, or something that they can engage on at a faster rate?
Are you talking about the intake form?
Well, we have, let's say, Hinkle, or just, I'm taking one, you know, entity that's gross, you know, they're aggressively hiring right now. They have an HR director. How, how engaged are they with this process in getting these recruits or candidates on their hiring process?
I can't, I don't have Hinkle yet, but, so there's, the way this process works, and I hid this slide, and I probably shouldn't have. The way this process works is what we're at, from what, we're asking employers, give me a slide with your opportunity and a QR code. And so that, something I can put on the TV. We put it on the TV. We also print out flyers, and Mike walks around with the flyers. When Mike's working with somebody, he's looking at, you know, part of, part of that conversation is he wants to see their resume. He's kind of that first check. Are you ready? Is your resume ready? Are we ready to hand you off? If, if we're ready to hand somebody off, then Mike is getting the resume to my team in the Kentucky Career Center, and then I've got a gentleman on this side. He's our local veteran employment representative, that's going out, making personal contact with that HR department with the resume in hand, and saying, I've got somebody for you. And we're bringing it right to them, and, and bringing it, we're bringing somebody to the doorstep, you know, figuratively.
Technically, it, it exists. It's just sometimes the HRs are just exasperated, and they can't get to it immediately.
No, yeah, I mean, I don't, I certainly don't want to put a lot of blame or fault on employers. They are short-staffed. There's a lot of turnover going on in HR right now. I mean, every, every week I see people move, HR folks are changing jobs at a very rapid rate right now. And, and so I think there's, there's a lot of dynamics there that I think companies are wrestling with. And so it's easy for me to say, be faster, but it, it, it's maybe hard to be faster with some of the things that they're working through. So that's me being very fair.
So these kind of observations, are those from Mr. Daley, or does he, is there a way for him to give more feedback about things that he's hearing about? Either the types of jobs that they're looking for, or other types of things in a community they're looking to move to, that were, you know, is that feedback from him a part of that process of hearing on the ground what he's hearing and being able to adjust what we're offering?
Yeah, I mean, I, I hadn't really thought about it formally in that way, but I mean, we, we, there's probably not two days that go by where I'm not talking to Mike, or he's not talking to us, and we're, we're communicating back and forth on what's going on, what he's saying, what he's hearing. I spoke to him this morning, and he's got a gentleman that really wants to go to Louisville. Okay, we, we did our best to talk him into here, but you know, so Mike's asking me, how do I get somebody referred to Louisville? I said, okay, we'll take care of that on our end. I mean, I'll just, I can reach out to the workforce entities up there and work that, so. But I don't think there's a, a lack of, I don't think there's anything that, that we're missing necessarily, what we're not offering. I mean, there are some challenges in terms of, there's always challenges in terms of service members having their experience recognized, or they don't, might not have credentials that are recognized by, you know, they might have, they might lack the credentials that surveying companies need, and, or, or a license, you know, particularly healthcare occupations in the military. Are they going to have their, all their healthcare experience recognized locally if they don't have a Kentucky state licensed, you know, and, and the answer is no. I mean, that, that's a challenge, that's a, that's a challenge above our head that, that we all have to work through. That's a state-level challenge in terms of licensing and, and recognition of credentials.
Be helpful. Thank you. Kind of switching back to your original, original statement about the, we have around 10,000 able-bodied individuals in the surrounding area that are, you know, not participating in the workforce.
10,000. If I said 10, yes, around eight. Across the 10 counties, but we have about 8,000. Oh, I'm sorry. We have about 8,000 job openings, but we have tens of thousands.
Tens of thousands, okay.
Tens of thousands.
Got it.
That are not participating. Our workforce participation rate is below 60%. 40% of our working-age population is not working, for whatever reason.
Yeah, so I would assume that, just based on our population, that 50% of those are women. And a lot of them may be, you know, with young children.
Correct.
And so of course, there is a point at which childcare becomes a net negative returning to work. So stay-at-home moms are saving their families at a lot of times more money than it would be if they participated in the workforce. So is this part of this, this part of the problem, how do we get folks back into the workforce to fill all these empty jobs? Is focused on, you know, figuring out these gaps? Is there some dollars that we, grant money that we could go for that could help in partnership with local childcare centers to, to make, bridge these barriers to young moms getting back in the workforce?
Yeah, so this workforce participation group that meets every three weeks, I mean, we've talked extensively about the childcare challenges. And it's just, it's a very complex, thorny, and mostly very expensive challenge to figure out. And I don't think we've, we haven't figured that out yet.
I, I knew you said that you'd hope to turn that into a task force with a, some staff support. So I do think, you know, if that's some of the federal money coming down, or grant support coming down, that it would be great if, you know, we could pursue some of that, because I know that would, you know, help families thrive if they can make all that work and take care of their kids, and make sure we have affordable, safe childcare for workforce. I think that's definitely, if we can figure that out, that sets our community ahead.
I, I think, you know, Jeff, you're going to hear this on Friday. I mean, childcare is a huge issue. We don't really know the full scope of it, but we know, we hear it all the time. Childcare and transportation are huge. But we also know, I mean, this is a changing workforce. I mean, and it's not going back, and there's a lot of evidence emerging that, you know, the, the way people view work has changed, and what employers have, on the employer's side, remote work opportunities, or work, or flex, or flexibility, work shift flexibility, is kind of what job seekers are demanding right now. And so what we've got to be able to communicate to our employers, we got to make sure they understand that. If they don't, many of them do, but if they don't. So, you know, I mean, people want flexibility. And, you know, you might not be able to get away working the same three, you know, 24/7 shift that you, you were able to do. If you're stuck in that, you're probably going to suffer a shortage of employees, because employees want flexibility. And employers are going to have to look at changing up shifts and being more accommodating. Because if they don't, I mean, I mean, right now, job seekers are, they have a vote. They can vote with their feet. And that's, you can walk off, you can walk off your shift at noon, go to your car, fire up your phone, and start driving for Uber. You might lose a little bit of pay, you might lose a little bit of benefits, but you can, you can walk off your job at lunchtime, go get a gig job in 30 minutes. And that's the environment right now, and we have to figure, we as a community have to figure that out, and that's what we've been trying to do with this working group. And hopefully, we're going to get, you know, we're going to move this into a more of a full-time focused thing to help us study this. There's got to be an academic approach to it. And we really have to study it and figure out what can we do locally to roll up our sleeves and, and figure this out.
I'm really glad to hear that you all are thinking about it, and the, all the complex issues that, you know, go into it, and that we are thinking about how our, our economy is changing, and how do we remain competitive. And so I'm, I'm glad to hear all of that. Thank you.
It's me awake at night. But it's, it's been a great team effort. There's been a lot of support, so we, we couldn't do it without the support from the city and the county and, and all the participants.
John, I think that you and I talked before in the past, at least try to go into the churches to try to see if you can possibly get people to work. Have you went to the people that don't want to work, you know, and asked them, what is the reason? I think what you were saying is the academic approach, but what is the reason why you're not going back to work? And I know people can have like a variety of reasons. But just trying to see if someone be, can be placed, that would be my first question. My second question, and, and I know that a lot of these manufacturers or employers, they're not laying people off. I do understand that. But is there a way with your, your, I guess, through the, the website and everything that you guys are doing, that if one manufacturer is laying them off, they can immediately talk to the other manufacturer? Not saying that that worker was a bad worker, it's just that they, you know, don't have the money, or they can't afford to pay them at that time. That they can possibly go back to work within like two weeks, especially if they feel the skills of another manufacturer or employer that fits in a worker that they need. Is there a possibility to do something like that, to have them to kind of talk to one another?
Absolutely. So to answer your first question on data collection, I mean, we, it's been a little bit, it's been a little bit, uh, it's been a little bit, I don't, I'm losing the word. Jumpy a little, jumpy's not the right word, but we've, anybody that comes in the Kentucky Career Center, we're surveying them. We're trying to find, like, why are you here? Are you employed or not employed, yada, yada, yada? So we're, we're running through that. So we've had that, we've been running that in place for a couple of months now, but we've had some stops since. We've had, we've realized some of our survey questions weren't worded appropriately, or we weren't, you know, so we've had to kind of, you know, we've fine-tuned it a couple of times, so that, so the results over the last few months have been a little bit, just a little bit sketchy as, as we've tried to fine-tune how we're asking questions. But what I can tell you is about 60% of the people that walk in there for unemployment appointment already have, are, are unemployed. About 40% of the people coming in from unemployment meetings or appointments are employed. They're just following up from an, an unemployment application from the fall of 2020, or sometime in 2021, in the height of COVID. So not everybody that walks in that building is unemployed. That's, I guess that's the main point, right? So, so we are, so we're asking questions about what's your barrier? Not a lot of people, percentage-wise, not a lot of folks are saying childcare or transportation are a barrier. But we recognize, at least the ones that come into that building. Now, obviously, if they got themselves to the building, they have transportation or some form of it. So we hear transportation, we hear childcare, but what, that's not what's playing out kind of in our local, the local data that we're, we've been collecting for the last couple of months. Of course, we're, we're going to continue to collect that and see, you know, maybe that'll, maybe that'll, maybe there'll be an uptick in that. To, to your question about employers laying off, we have, obviously, we haven't had a lot of examples of that, but you know, but there's one from this spring, Studi. Studi, as a corporation, decided they were going to close this plant and kind of take that, take all that operations and move it to Pennsylvania. But they, Studi was very proactive. They reached out to us. I mean, I think the chamber made an introduction, but they reached out to us. We actually, Studi asked us to run a job fair inside of their, inside of their company one day, because they wanted to make sure every person that was going to be impacted by a layoff had an opportunity to get employment elsewhere. And so we, I mean, we had, I think, 12 employers show up for that. So, so that, we're, we're prepared to do that when we know about it. Obviously, Studi kind of had a long off-ramp, and we had an opportunity to go in there and do that with them. We, as, as a Department of Labor entity, I mean, we have to do what's called rapid response, so anytime there's a, a large company's going to do a layoff, we're actually obligated to go in there and help, help anybody that's going to be affected by a layoff, whether that, you know, they have to get, we have to like, make sure they understand what the rights are. There, if they, if they need help with unemployment, if they need help with employment, if they want to go back, depending on what type of layoff, the, the nature of the layoff, there may be an opportunity to go back to school. We go in there with, it's the workforce, it's our, our team, it's the Office of Vacation and Rehab, it's adult education, it's goodwill, and it's a number of other partners that will roll in and do a rapid response with anybody that's doing the layoff.
Is the rapid response even more digital? Let's say if like the HR, they lay, lay a person off, you know, in employer X, but there's somebody that, you know, employer Z is actually hiring.
You're, so you're talking individual layoffs, not like mass layoffs?
It could be mass or individual, but it's almost like where you can be like, this is a perfect match for you. You know, you guys have a job opening right now. This individual is laid off, or 10 individuals are laid off, and they match up with their criteria. Can it be where you could send it to them like, almost what you're saying is a rapid response, so they can look at it, and they could choose to hire them or not hire them, but they have the skills to basically get hired within, you know, a quick amount of time?
I don't think we have that level of fidelity, like on individual basis. We have that in place. What we are working on, and this goes back to this working group, one of the opportu, one of the things that we're working with, and the chamber's helping us with this, we're trying to work on a reverse referral system, where if somebody's not hired by a company for any reason, they get reverse referred to us, so that we can take a look at, like, why aren't they getting hired? Is their resume in bad shape? Is their work history in bad shape? Is there something that we can do to, to polish them up and make them more employable? So that's not, I won't, I mean, we're working on that. We're working to that end, but that, but, but we're not quite there yet. And we're, we're having conversations with staffing agencies. We're trying to get staffing agencies to start this effort, because staffing agencies, I mean, they have some rough characters that come in that just, despite their best effort, they cannot get employed. And I said, we're saying, okay, we'll send them to us. Let's see if we can get them, get them squared away, and get, make them, get them employable. So we're, we're, we've had about three meetings on that so far, and we're continuing to, to work on that.
Thank you.
John, thank you very much. Appreciate your time and your work. And we know it's difficult, but you understand, we, we're asking you to press forward and make the magic happen, so your, your challenge is our challenge, but it's, it's appreciated, so thank you.
All these, all these economic announcements are great, but they're causing me a lot of stress. But it's good. It's what I'm here for.
Public security.
Hopefully.
Jason, welcome to the podium.
Let me see if I can get my presentation up here. Where do I hit present? Sorry. Oh, I got you.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you all for allowing me to come and update you guys on the progress of this. It's been seven months now, and we are cranking away on this. I, I set my slideshow up to give you a few slides, just to kind of refresh you and remind you what this is, in the first place. I know you guys look at a lot, at a lot of things, so I want to make sure you remember what this is. The outreach campaign that we're running, which is funded by the city and the county, has a few different goals. One is to encourage workforce participation locally, as John mentioned. And the second is to drive new workforce to the region outside of Bowling Green, and the 10 county region. How we're doing it, the approach here was to create a hub of information, a place for employers to list their business and tout what they have. And then to drive job seekers there using out, an outreach campaign. We track those, report on those monthly, and then we make it a little better the next month. We make it a little better the next month. And we try to, what we're trying to do is get, match employers with talent. And I'm going to go through some numbers, some results numbers here in a moment, that'll kind of show you where we are with that. The strategy again was to use a sort of a website as a central hub of information, and act as a selling tool for the, not only for those jobs that are open here, but also for the community, for those who may want to relocate. And also inspire local workforce to return to the workforce, engage pride in them, and so forth. The website holds the information, all the selling tools, but the digital, the mechanisms to drive people there have mostly been digital. We've used traditional outreach methods as well, and then media and partner promotions, as well as events. So here's the scope of the issue. These numbers are moving targets, as John will testify to, and many of them lag behind what the actual numbers are. So there's, they are somewhat alarming if you look at how quickly they're growing. So, you know, we're, it's as if this building was on fire, we're using a fire extinguisher to try to put it out, it feels like some days, but, but we're doing the best we can. So, you know, last week, we just announced 140 more positions are going to be coming, becoming open here in Bowling Green for the OIGlass. here in Bowling Green for the OI Glass facility. So, um, that's on top of the EV battery facility adding thousands next year. So, you know, it's, it's, it's exciting. It's an exciting time for the city and county and, and the region and how fast we're growing. But it just makes a case for why John's team is working so hard, burning the midnight oil to get this done. We're expected to have eighty-five hundred or more open positions here, um, in the next twelve months. That's the best guess, but based on all the thousands of jobs that have been added, if all of those come into fruition, we're going to essentially double the issue within the next twelve months. So, um, we have a pretty solid workforce participation number according to the Department of Labor. Again, this lags way behind, but we are ahead of the state in that aspect. And so, you know, we're, we're proud of that, but we also know that number's not exactly accurate. Uh, doesn't represent everyone.
Jason, if I get that sixty percent, that would be Warren County.
Yes.
That is not true of our surrounding counties. It's, it's much, much closer to the fifty-six, fifty-eight percent in our surrounding counties, where most of our workforce comes from anyway.
That's correct. So the roadmap for this particular, my particular piece of the workforce project, I got a little red arrow there of where we are. This is a slide that I presented initially. But, um, we're kind of halfway through the campaign. We're gathering data. We're recreating all of the campaigns that we have going to make them a little better now that we know how they performed, um, so that we can show a little bit, continue to show better results every month. Uh, some of the efforts so far, I'll just run through some of these to give you an idea at a granular level what we're doing. We've run, we've tested many traditional, uh, media buys, billboards, newspaper, magazine, television commercials, uh, print materials and so forth. Those print materials are mostly going to John's team and their resource centers. Digital outreach, geo-targeted ads, so these are ads that we target based on the location of individuals, social media ads, Google ads, YouTube ads, uh, and so forth. That's sort of the digital component, and those have been the ones that have performed the best. Event wise, um, we did an event and sponsored a concerts in the park here locally. Um, we worked with John and his team to present an employer summit. We had, I don't know how many employers, maybe thirty or forty? Down to the Chamber of Commerce, uh, about five weeks ago and presented to them all of their options, all the things that the city and county and community, the chamber are doing for them to help them. So, um, we kind of walked them through those. We had some really good engagement, a lot of good follow-up. The Kentucky Chamber of Commerce was there that night. They came over, or that day, they came to me. They want to partner with us to try to, to build some sort of mutual, uh, work effort. So I'll be talking to them actually on Friday. So, uh, that was exciting because I think they'll be able to help us push some of this out a little better. Enhancements and adjustments, um, this working group that we're a part of, Jeff, John, myself, Judge Buchanan, um, all the local, uh, the superintendents, everyone, you know, we've got a really good group of people involved. This working group continually audits what we're doing for you guys. So I think, and what we're doing for the community, which I think is a great thing because we're going into this with a very scientific look and now we're hearing from every aspect of the community and what they're facing, including the employers. So that working group has really helped us refine what we're doing. And we're making, after each meeting, we come back and we make adjustments to the campaign based on the recommendations. So many of those things, uh, involved budget adjustments, target groups. We're targeting groups such as Spanish speakers, military veterans, um, military bases within two hundred miles. The construction industry, because as you know, we are facing about a three thousand home deficit every year going forward for the next, I think it's three years, um, where we need three thousand homes a year to be built. And, um, uh, Judge Buchanan and I went and met with the Builders Association a few weeks ago. They said, we absolutely cannot make that happen with the current workforce. It just is impossible. So, um, so meeting with them and trying to understand their issues and adjust based on that. So we're running specific ads to construction, people with construction work experience. We updated, uh, the website application feature. Early in the campaign, we were, uh, when someone would come to the website and apply for a job, they'd be sent to the employer's HR hiring page. So they would get their application. And that was great because it pushed them directly there. It got them straight to the source. They're applying for the job immediately. They don't have to go through a, a middle, a middleman, if you will. But the issue we found there as a working group was, um, many of the employers have very long application processes, background checks, they have, I mean, it's a twenty-minute process to fill out an application and people just don't have the patience for that. So to up the yield and increase the number of applications we're receiving, we created a very short application form, which we then send directly to the employer and we say, this person would like to work for you. We copy John's team. They follow up to make sure it is being taken care of. And in many instances, John's team has had, have had a one-on-one, hands-on connection with some of these people. They'll come back and say, well, I, I sent the application. I didn't get the job. John's team will say, okay, well, let's look at other opportunities for you locally. They'll also do the resume audit and take a look at their skill set and try to match them up. The really most, I think one of the more interesting things about the campaign was the very first application we got was a person from California who had come through here on vacation once and said, I want to live in Bowling Green. I want to move here and work. And, um, I was talking to Brian on John's team and he says, is this, is this real? It's like, I think so. And so we, uh, Brian called the guy and he did. He wanted, he wants to live here. So, um, so they've, that, in those cases, it's not a specific job application, but it's a handoff to his team to say, okay, where would you best fit? And that person had law enforcement, um, a background, so that's where they kind of drove that person. Again, the partners that, for us in this effort are the Workforce Development Board, our Chamber of Commerce, this task force working group we have going, and, um, now we're going to build a partnership with the Kentucky Chamber of Commerce. So that's what it is. This is how it has performed. So I'm going to run through a couple of high-level numbers that hopefully will help you guys understand where we are. Number of applicants who clicked apply now on the website so far, since we launched it on March first, is three thousand eight hundred and thirty-one. The number of local employers who've signed up for the program is a hundred and seven. Number of visitors to the website is over twenty-four thousand to date. And the hiring rate for employers currently signed up is about thirty-eight percent. So what we did was we polled the employers, those hundred and seven who were signed up. Of the responses, we took the mean average of the, those, some hire five percent of people we send them, some hire literally ninety-nine percent. They hire everyone that they can. So, um, but the, the average works out to be thirty-eight percent. So that's how we created a hiring rate for this. We've made some adjustments to, like I said, the application process. Since then, uh, since June first, when we adjusted that application, we have received six hundred and six filled-out applications for, uh, employers here in Warren County. Two hundred and thirty is the projected number of filled positions, uh, through the new quick apply feature. There's, so we collect applications, how many people got jobs. Number of job seekers requesting assistance is fifty-four. I think the key number on this page is the two-thirty. So, um, two hundred and thirty people placed. We're, we're excited about that since it's just since June, this data is just two months. So on average, you know, we're hoping to, um, fill a hundred and fifteen positions and I want to drive that up, you know? So as we make this more efficient, I think we can continue to make that number, uh, improve that number. So that's the exciting thing. We are filling jobs. Two hundred and thirty doesn't sound like a lot compared to eighty-five hundred. So, you know, do that math. It's going to take quite a while to knock this out, but we're one piece of this project. John's team is doing the lion's share of the work. The chamber is doing a lot of work working with employers. And then we're sort of this, uh, tool for them to help them get the job done. So that's it. That's the update. I'm going to go back to the numbers. If you guys have questions on those, because I know some of that can be a little nebulous or, or maybe confusing, but I tried to keep it to things that I thought were relevant for you all, especially the number of jobs filled and number of people who are visiting the site.
Are there any hard numbers as applicants to direct hires, actual, actual hires? Is that number available?
So we're, we don't get a lot of feedback from the employers on that. They are, we, in the terms of use that we created, they are required to provide information when we ask. They're very, as John said, they're very busy, they're very overwhelmed. It's sort of difficult to get data from them. So that's why we went to that hiring rate that we created. We said, can you at least give us a number of the applicants that we're sending you? How, what percentage are you hiring? And that percentage across the board is, you know, the average is thirty-eight percent. So we're having to extrapolate a little. That two-thirty is not an exact, I can't tell you who those two hundred and thirty people were. It might have been one ninety-five, it might have been two fifty-four. But it's the best number we can get to, uh, without having hard data from the hundred and seven employers. Some do report in, um, and we take that into account, but it's tough.
Do we know how many are coming from the local or region?
We, yeah, we do know that, um, I would say it's about a forty-sixty right now, forty percent outside of the region. We do have a, a small percentage of international applicants that use the websites to apply that don't live in this country. So we're addressing that with John's team right now and how to filter those out. We do have a few employers that hire remotely overseas, so it's relevant for them. But for the lion's share of the employers, it's, they need boots on the ground. So, um, so it's little things like that that we work through every week to try to tighten it up and make it a little better.
Jason, are you tracking like how long do they stay in this employment as well?
They're not. No, we're not. Um, I think that'd be a fascinating number though.
Would like to know, I would like to know if someone got hired, how long do they stay with this particular employer?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, I think that would be a good, once we reach the end of this process, I can go back to, say, the city of Bowling Green and say, you've, you received four hundred applications. How many of those did you hire, you know? Uh, and how long did they stay employed? And, you know, were they a quality employee? Is this, is this what you were looking for? So I think that's a, that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good measure. So that could go into our end-of-year assessment for the whole thing. I'd like to come back next quarter, by the way, and, and do this again and kind of see where we are. Because if we do want to go into twenty twenty-three, we need to know some things like that that really understand what we're up against next year, you know? Have we made a dent? Was it enough? Do we need to go back at it? That sort of thing. So questions like that are excellent. Thank you.
Just one comment, Mayor, Commissioners. This is a very, I think, very unique project that I doubt you'll see any other city or county out there in this country taking on. It's unique in that the city and county is funding a free website and social media for companies to use to find employees. It's, it's free marketing, it's free recruitment. And so the frustration, and I'll just be hon, I'm, I'm always honest, but I'm going to be very honest tonight. The frustration is that we're offering this up for free and then yet the employers are not stepping up to the plate and helping us in return and giving us data, information. Whereas whenever you have something for free, you're not going to worry a whole lot about it. Whereas if you're, if you're, if you paid for something, you're probably going to pay more attention to it. I'm not saying we start charging employers for this service, but it's kind of, it's the predicament we're in is that we've offered all this up for free and we've, we've built this, this, this nice, uh, piece of, of work. And, you know, we've got a hundred and seven employers on there. We're trying to help people find work. We're trying to help employers find workers. Yet we're not getting full participation and full, uh, feedback on it. So I just, I would ask all the employers that are out there already signed up on it, if anybody's watching this, I don't know if anybody's watching this meeting or not, but I would ask them to be more participatory and participate and, and give Jason and Crowd South feedback on what they're doing. And everybody's got to step up and you can, you can only, we can only go so far with this. The government, city and county, Crowd South, Workforce Development Board, we can only take this so far, but the, the employers have to meet us halfway and step up and take some action. Uh, because we're, we're giving this, we're giving this to them for free. And I'll shut up now, but it, it's, when you don't have any skin in the game, it, it's, it's, it happens like this. So.
And I'll, and to back that up, I, I think the, um, I think the great thing about this tool is it is, it's producing results. If, if an employer uses it, they will get applications, they will hire people. Will it be one or will it be a hundred? I don't know. But they, they will get results. So it should be one arrow in their quiver if they're listing it on Indeed, if they're doing job fairs. There may be, an HR representative may have ten things that they do to recruit. This should be one. It's a, it's less than five minutes to fill out the profile and then they will start getting applications the next month. So I would, I would back that up by saying, I encourage everyone to, every, every employer that needs workers, sign up for this. It, it's not going to cost you a thing.
Jason, I'd, I'd like to make a suggestion. Um, I'm, no, I'm not on the, the board, but it would be beneficial if you could have a meeting. I know there are a hundred and seven participants, a lot, but maybe you could have a meeting with the HR. I mean, you know, where the rubber meets the road. I'm sure they're too busy in their daily schedule, but if they had the opportunity to just come down and see collectively, you know, amongst their peers, they're all in the same business and that's to recruit, retain and sustain their businesses. It would be beneficial, in my opinion, if they were kind of take the time to see what this means and what it can mean for them. And then that feedback, like we're asking for, um, I think they would be invested at that moment. But it almost takes that face-to-face opportunity to really get that momentum going.
And, and you know, um, to that point, the, the employer summit that we hosted down at the chamber, like I said, thirty or forty showed up. I thought all of them would be signed up. You know, it was probably half that were, that were signed up to the website. And those that were signed up, they advocated for it. They raised their hand and said, yeah, I'm, I'm getting applications from this guy. So you should sign. And after that meeting, we did have a flood of new organizations apply. So you're right. I mean, sort of like a town hall discussion type thing. And we should do it regularly through the chamber because our chamber is our connection to our employers. And they're doing a fantastic job bringing in new business. They're doing a fantastic job maintaining the relationships we have. So, yeah, we need to take advantage of that as much as we can.
Jason, I'm also the president this year of the Southern Kentucky Society of Human Resource Managers Organization.
Awesome.
And I would love for you to get on one of our, we do two Zooms a month.
Okay.
Usually a program. So let's talk about that and get in front of, it's usually forty to fifty HR folks on there.
That's perfect.
Probably don't know about you and what you do.
Yeah, please add me.
I'll get you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Jason, thank you so much for what you're doing and it's really exciting, this, uh, charting this uncharted territory here and trying to figure out this workforce shortage issue. And just kind of sort of piggybacking off some of what we're learning about, what the barriers are. And I know, um, there are other tools out there to figure out, you know, what are the skills that I have or my talents? And then here's the types of jobs that use those. There's also, um, I think we have some, uh, types of programs through the Workforce Development Board that helps people get their certifications, get their CDL licenses, get these things. If they're, you know, as a, you know, two-point-oh, I'm just getting excited about the potential of a one-stop shop that also, you know, can funnel someone. Okay, so you're interested in a job here, we can look and see what types of jobs are, you know, related to your skills. And if you don't quite have the education or certifications, here's some programs that are offered to then can funnel people into jobs. If part of this is helping these people who, for whatever reason, have some barriers, if we can start using this as a one-stop shop for also all the opportunities to upskill and, um, get those certifications to fill these jobs. It's exciting to kind of be moving forward and trying to, at least we're in the same room talking about these, these barriers and issues and how are we going to break through them to, to really, um, you know, fill these jobs that we have.
Yeah, thank you. And I would encourage everyone to give us any sug, any ideas or suggestions you have like that. We would love to get them because, you know, I was telling, uh, John earlier, we, we're going to create a change document that, you know, in the next version of this, if we move to that, what do we want it to look like, you know? That's the beauty of a campaign like this. If we don't like it, we can change it. If it's not working, we can change it. So, um, we can keep evolving this thing and your feedback is, is very helpful for that. I would invite you all too to, to pop into that working group at some point if you'd like. I think it'd be interesting for you to hear what we talk about. It's a really good, um, it's a really good mix of people who are passionate about making this community better. And I think it's, like John said, I mean, I can't name very many communities that are doing this type of thing. There are a handful. There are a handful of communities that are actually paying people to move there across the country, Kansas City's one of them, so there are communities doing that, that sort of thing. I don't know how those efforts are going, but, you know, if you think about, there are communities that are losing workforce, not just, not just they have lost workforce, but they're still losing workforce. And a prime example is Hawesville, Kentucky, the Century Aluminum Plant just shut down up there, it's a couple hundred people that just lost their job, it's hundreds. So we've been running an outreach program to that area, and we've had 42 applications in the past two weeks for our aluminum manufacturers here. So it's that kind of thing that we've got to, we've got to stay on top of things, and we don't, we don't always know everything that's going on, so I would encourage you, if you see something that you think could help us, please let us know and we'll, we'll jump on it.
Thank you, Jason, appreciate your update, appreciate your work.
You guys, appreciate it. If you have any questions, just shoot me an email.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. We have Eric Tuttle, you have opportunity for comments, ask that you keep it within five minutes. This is actually not too bad, so.
So I'm going to hand this out first, so I don't have to go back and forth, my, my foot doesn't like it much. First, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to come in and, and talk. It's, it's, as a citizen, it's always nice to be able to address our elected officials and, and kind of talk about our concerns, so I appreciate the opportunity. Today, I'm, I'm here to discuss panhandling and its impact on our community. The, the panhandling issue starts with why the panhandler begs. According to analysis by multiple national studies done by Arizona State University, panhandlers spend much of their money, approximately 80%, on alcohol, drugs, and tobacco. Although some money goes towards food, transportation, and toiletries, panhandlers rarely save any money, partly because they risk having it stolen, and partly because their primary purpose is to immediately buy alcohol or drugs to feed their addictions. Sources for those I can provide if anyone's interested, it was effectively five different studies from 1999 through 2013 that were used to, to compile the evidence. But in short, panhandling within our community perpetuates drug, alcohol abuse cycles. It's the end of a cycle of self-destruction that's led its participants to homelessness and to the street, and it keeps them there. It isn't necessarily about whether people see someone from an eyesore perspective, "Oh, that person's standing on the corner." It's, it's where that person is in their life, that's the problem. There's been a long-running discussion in Bowling Green about panhandlers, a discussion that peaked in January 2018 when the city implemented a significant and, and somewhat celebrated change to its panhandling ordinances. This had to do with the regulation of aggressive panhandling. We tried and failed with licenses, but since then, we've also put into place signage and, and citizen education programs about, you know, what the outcomes are of, of, of feeding the addiction of these individuals who are panhandling. The challenge is, though, that anyone who's driven around here since 2018 recognizes the problem hasn't gotten any better, it's getting worse. Last week, I drove from my house in Indian Hills to Old Morgantown Road at 8:00 AM. I saw nine panhandlers. Pretty much every single major intersection had one or two panhandlers on it. It's time to rethink the problem and our solution to it, and it's also time to face the music regarding commitment to our city ordinances. We, as a community, cannot continue to fold every time litigation is threatened or when we unexpected costs arise. When there's no direct public documentation as to why this ordinance has failed, it's pretty obvious that we need to engage businesses, we need to engage the population, and we need to engage the social services that we have here, along with our police, to help these individuals reach a, 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 a point where they can change from the path that they're on. Now, that requires them to make a choice, but we can't continue to encourage them on that path by handing them money. Over the last four years, we've compromised on monuments, on holiday displays, on our obscenity ordinance, we withdrew the American flag when outside community pressures came in and threatened us. And one can presume that we may also fold on this issue. At some point, the city has to pick a fight or two and invest in our well-established city values. If we can afford to spend millions on beautifying downtown, on making this a place to be downtown, a place where those panhandlers will migrate to, by the way, they, they, they enjoy the, the places that are where you have high-volume content. We are, we will again have issues with aggressive panhandling. If, if we don't, we'll have nothing left to defend. Ultimately, we'll be like the downtowns of Louisville and Lexington, awash in filth, debauchery, crime, and murder. I've attached an extensive and well-thought-out brief from the Urban Institute Safe Cities Program. There's a number of cities who faced problems like this in districts, there's a number of cities, and, and they're, they're constructive processes, they're not partisan, "Oh, just ban them and throw them in jail." These are processes where they go in with the police, with social services, with ordinances, as a combined effort to help these people to stop the actual giving of money to the individuals and move them towards social assistance. Anyway, thank you again for your time, I appreciate your consideration. If I can assist with input, participate in any way, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle.
Thank you.
This concludes our meeting tonight. Thank you, everybody.